Tena Kotu Katau, welcome everyone to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council. Welcome to councillors, to start, to the media and to the public. We do not have a prayer today owing to a timing slip up, so we'll move straight on to public forum and...
I believe that he's scheduled for next year.
Oh right, okay. So there's no public forum either. And there are no apologies?
councillor Hall just takes the means city's half an hour late, cannot put an apology for lateness.
So I'll move from the chair that we accept the apology from councillor Hall, second to councillor Staines. All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item three, confirmation of the agenda, I'll move that council confirms the public part of the agenda with the following alteration in regard to standing order 2.1. Option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments, second to councillor Staines. All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item four, declarations of interest, I'll move that the council... are there any additions to the declarations of interest? Right. So I'll move that council notes the elected members' interest register, attachment A, confirms the proposed management plan for elected members' interests and notes the executive leadership team's interest register. Second to councillor Staines. All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item five, I'll move that the council confirms the public part of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on 26th of November 2018 as a correct record, second to councillor Staines. All those, any discussion? All those in favour please say aye. Against, carried. On to the minutes of committees. Item seven, finance and council control organisations, councillor Lord.
I'd just like to move that we note the minutes of the finance and council control meeting on the 20th of November.
Second to councillor Staines. All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Economic Development Committee, councillor Staines.
Your worship, I move that the council notes the minutes of the Economic Development Committee meeting on 20th of November 2018 and takes part C items of the minutes of the Economic Development Committee held on Tuesday, the 20th of November 2018, and the non-public part of the meeting.
Second to councillor Gary, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye. Against, carried. Item nine, traffic, excuse me, in parking bylaws, subcommittee, councillor Wiley.
I move that the note, notes the minutes of the traffic and parking bylaw subcommittee held on 29th of November, be taken.
Second to councillor O'Malley, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item 10, Mozgill-Tari Community Board, councillor Lord.
I'd move that we note the minutes of the Mozgill-Tari Community Board held on 3rd of October.
Second to councillor Wilson, no discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Okay, item, on to reports, item 11, Dunedin cycleways, urban cycleways programme, Mr Saunders, if you'd like to join us, thank you. Okay.
May I move to questions?
We'll go straight to questions on the report, councillors, questions. Councillor Wiley.
Thank you, your worship. Mr Saunders, I just wanted to touch base quickly about the South Dunedin Cycling Project and I take it the Hillside Road, Forbury Road was an indication or is that, there's going to be a lot of work done between now and then on whether that would work?
Yes, that's, I guess indicative of a route we think may be a good connection between the city and St Clair or South Dunedin, but there is a lot of work to do to demonstrate or before we would reach a decision to move ahead with something. But it speaks to the desire of this programme to extend our existing network based on feedback.
Okay, so the residents will be fully engaged?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councillor O'Malley.
To the report, I just want to look at attachment F which is the Cavisham to Mozgill section of cycleway. And it's a fairly low resolution map, but I'm noting that the cycleway is very close to and I think is going to be to some extent in the rail bed at certain points. Is it going to be in the rail bed at certain points, I guess is my question, as it's planned?
Yes, so there will be a significant amount of that path that sits on Kiwirau land and the Tunnels Trust have done a lot of work with Kiwirau, early discussions around the feasibility of that and part of that project will be continuing that.
And when they've had that conversation with Kiwirau, they confirmed that Kiwirau would still be able to support the potential inland port at Melbourne with a double rail in that spot or not?
I'm not aware.
Okay. And I'll just, I'll be commenting then, thanks.
Councillor Vandervass.
Kiwi rail requirement recently come up with for a five metre separation between rail and public largely because of an accident they had with a loose flapping cover on one of their trains, carriages. Is that something that you are negotiating or is that something that you have actually been able to plan to get the required distance?
So there was a significant amount of discussion between, again, between the trust and Kiwirau on that matter. So they, the early discussions that had happened which led to, informed the trust's feasibility work on this were based on their old requirement. Then the, then they did release, I guess, that new requirement of five metres, they have confirmed that they will consider the narrower clearance and obviously the protection provided to cyclists through increased fence heights or that material would be considered by Kiwirau to ensure the appropriate level of protections provided, but they have been positive with the trust in that position.
So am I to understand then that the five metres might be negotiable down to three metres which would remain their absolute?
That's my understanding and that would be part of the detailed planning of the project, yes.
And if this three metre safety barrier or safety distance is required, how is that going to be accommodated by putting the proposed cycleway underneath the Wickliffe Street Overbridge near Emerson's Brewery?
Are you referring to the existing cycle, the urban cycleway project?
I'm referring to the project that we decided as a council in December last year that would move the main trunk line over at a cost of $1.5 million to allow cyclists to go straight under the Wickliffe Street Overbridge rather than the current route that goes around it.
Yeah, that's right, so Kiwirau have accepted the, our plans that are again to provide the 1.8 metre high fence as protection for anyone using that path. So we have, and I don't have the details in front of me because it wasn't part of this report, but I could find them for you to get the exact distance between the centre line and the edge of the path or our fence, but we have been through that process with them, I just, I don't have it in front of me because it's not part of this.
Okay, so the 1.8 metre special fence that's going to be built as a protection for cyclists, is that included in the $1.5 million cost of moving the cycleway, of moving the main trunk railway sideways?
It's included in the overall project costs, yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Lord.
Look, I was just looking at point 24 on page 27 where it says that option B, or not option B, bullet point B, it says providing a safe connection from the existing cycle network from Central City and Harbour Circuit to St Clair. And I was trying to read, read the maps and they're very difficult for me to read, but I'm just wondering which bits of that still need to be completed, I thought that was pretty much done. And where's the unsafe point?
The, the programme we've got doesn't, doesn't include a level of service or a facility of any type and that could be separated or otherwise, doesn't necessarily all the way to St Clair. So there is, there is obviously been sections put in, but there's a gap on Victoria Road, there's nothing, there's nothing at the St Clair end and there's nothing currently down Hillside or Forbury. So there isn't a connection at the moment all the way to St Clair which is from our feedback, a level of service gap that we need to close?
There was talk at one point that they might have been able to put a road along, or a cycle track along the back of the dunes. Now, I know there was a bit of dune slippage there a couple of years ago and I'm wondering is that still on the table as an option potentially?
It could be considered as an option through, as we move through, you know, proper options analysis.
There is still room there.
Oh, it hasn't, we haven't looked at it recently, so I'm not sure.
Yep, okay.
Councillor Wilson.
Can I, second question first, the, you're looking at an option one or two, the option eight to appreciate is the Dunedin Tunnels Project. I'm just wondering where that...
Sorry, and I should have explained that, so what, option eight is per the table on point 14 of the report, so that prioritises the tunnels trail but also puts focus on natural extensions to the current cycle network and level of service gap, so all of that is included with an option eight. So that, for clarity in terms of the recommendation, that's the programme that we will be putting forward to NZTA.
Okay, I'm just wondering, only just because I understand that the minister, Minister Twyford didn't understand the terminology and we use various terminology for the Cavisham project and the Wungatui project, whether we can come with a standard name being the Dunedin Tunnels Trust or Dunedin Tunnels Trail encompassing both parts, stage one and stage two, because otherwise I think it's lacking in the regional land transport plan some clarity, would that be correct?
It's, it's in the regional land transport plan, so it's...
As, as, not as Dunedin?
No, so yes, we can clarify and have a single name for the length of the project and we can talk to the trust to ensure that they are comfortable with the project name we come up with.
And just, I'm going to ask it as a question rather, is it, am I correct in believing that a lot of signals of Kiwirau are within the three metre from the centre and would be affected by any wavering curtains as, as much at risk as a person? My, my, my understanding is that the case that councillor Vandervass explored, talk out several hundred thousand dollars worth of signals which the, that Kiwirau themselves should be ensuring their curtains are closed for especially round urban areas where there are more signals.
Yeah, I, I don't know all the details, but yes, there is Kiwirau infrastructure within that envelope as, as well.
Councillor Stedman. Okay. Councillor Vandervass.
Regarding the options that we have presented in this paper, the cost to ratepayers, I understand that we're applying to NZTA, you've had some indication of what percentage of the cost would be borne by ratepayers and what would be borne by taxpayers in this?
So at the, at the moment we're waiting on the final funding details, they have announced a significant amount of investment in walking and cycling, activity classes. Previously the urban cycle, as you know, was, was two thirds taxpayer or NZTA funded, one third DCC funded. That's the, the piece we're still waiting on is exactly what that targeted funding rate will be. But at a, at a minimum, our, our funding rate with NZTA is around the 55% mark this year, that will reduce by a percent a year, but the, we would expect the messaging coming out of NZTA is that there will be what they refer to as targeted enhanced funding rates for cycling, we're just waiting on those details. They will be available to the council when we come back with any project details to progress with.
Thank you, that makes that clear. Given that there is significant rate and taxpayer funding involved in this, why is it that on page 28, under disadvantages of doing this, cost is not mentioned? Surely if you're going to do something and there is a cost, then that should be listed in disadvantages. And I note also that in option two, the option of modifying the, the cost, there is no disadvantage saying, referring to cost either. Why is it that these advantages and disadvantages are ignoring cost? My understanding is that they're supposed to give us the pros and cons and not simply ignore cost.
And I guess our, our assessment of it is that, and we did include it in the status quo as an advantage, in option three, that if we retain the status quo there would not need to spend its local share, so you could put in the disadvantages of both other options that if they were approved and we proceeded through to construction, that we would need to spend our local share. So I acknowledge that, we didn't include it, but we can consider that in the future.
Can I get an undertaking from you that you will consider it in the future?
I don't think the staff are in a, I don't think the staff are in a position to give those kind of undertakings at a council meeting.
Okay, can I ask for a more general undertaking then? And that is that when you're putting advantages and disadvantages in any option, that all the advantages and disadvantages, especially financial ones, will be put in?
We consider it, my, my position on that would be that the spend in, in terms of the advantages of disadvantage of investing in cycleways were considered through the 10 year plan, we're now talking about the mechanics and the details of spending, that funding that's already been approved in the budget, so we can consider it and I'll acknowledge that and that's probably something that we'll need to further discuss as to how we address it.
Thank you.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you, your worship. For the benefit of the community, Mr Saunders, can you provide reassurance that prioritising the development of the tunnels trail will not affect the completion of the peninsula connection?
Yeah, they are funded from different areas of NZTA's funding, so the peninsula is a safety improvement, local road safety improvement project, we're talking here about the walking and cycling activity class.
Councillor O'Malley.
Just seeking clarification around this motion, I know it's basically the first line of option one, but in, but the option as it's read doesn't indicate that you will be going directly to NZTA at the moment, that you'd be forming the trust. So are we approving a submission to NZTA or option eight now with the design as it stands?
No, so the programme, what we're, what we're asking for approval of is option eight, we've got to submit a programme business case, that's the first thing we submit to NZTA, that doesn't include any details of any individual projects, that's to get NZTA sign off on the programme of investment for cycling and then we would move on to individual projects from that point.
Okay, now it's on the regional land transport plan because at the last minute, the last meeting I put Cavisham to Mozgill cycleway on the plan, that's why it's got its name. Now, the reason that I asked the committee to put that on the plan was that by being on the regional land transport plan you're also eligible for provincial growth fund money and applicants, applications. So are we planning, and, and the reason I wanted to do that was because I feel that if we are to get off the rail bed, which I would like this to do, we will need extra money and provincial growth fund would be a source to go to there. Are there any plans to go to the provincial growth fund?
No.
Would we consider that potentially in the future?
We can consider it, I, my view is that we should be going through the walking cycling activity class for delivering this project and potentially seeking increased funding assistance and the messaging we're getting would be that transport projects, if there is an opportunity through the NZTA funding programme, should be seeking that support.
Definitely.
Yep.
I was thinking supplementary rather than direct. There's been some traffic counts done, am I correct in saying that 35,000 to 38,000 people movements go through the oval on the commuter rush?
Approximately, I'm trying to think back to that work, so I think that's right, yeah.
The reason I'm looking at that is, how many do you think we would get of those 35,000 converting over to cycles?
Look, we, we would have to do that work when we move on through the business case process to seek funding for this particular project, that would be part of the business cases, identifying the benefits and trying to, I guess quantify the number of users we could expect on that path.
That's great, thanks.
Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Just on option eight, where it says intersections and crossings of main arterial roads in terms of identifying level of service gaps etc, is that only, can that only be applied to roads that we are in control of or can it also be applied to level of service gaps at intersections on the state highway network?
For our delivery, it would generally apply to our local roads, however, we, we do have a good relationship with NZTA and we are treating the cycle network as one, so for example the, the new one-way project obviously gives us the core of a spine and we do have discussions with them about how we treat those intersections, connect to our network. So while we don't have direct control over decisions on their intersections, we certainly are discussing it and have the ability to influence it.
Particularly in areas where it does connect, I mean, it's difficult obviously because they are our connecting roads and I'm thinking specifically of the connection from the Botanic Gardens through into North East Valley which is identified as an option in here but is on the state highway network which makes it difficult, but that wouldn't be excluded from this, if we were to support this option.
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Elder.
Just two questions. One, Hillside Road, Hillside Road plan, given that there's actually lots and lots of businesses on Hillside Road and having talked to people in the area, workers and businesses are finding it difficult for parking, is there consideration maybe of using other routes or how's that going to be affected?
Again, we haven't done that level of detail, what we've identified is key commuter routes that are an opportunity to provide a connection and we have done some early looking at the width of the road reserve and what we might be able to achieve, we are well aware of the importance placed on parking by businesses and residents where there's limited off-street parking, so that's something that will need to be considered as we move through. Hillside Road's obviously incredibly wide and does offer us some options with the space we have in that road reserve, but it all needs to go through an options analysis to determine whether it is the best route to get to St Clair.
Have you considered McCandrew Road, given it hasn't got so many businesses and it is quite wide or was that in the calculations?
It will be considered.
The second question is sort of looking at the future and I know we're putting, we're looking at putting this plan into the NZTA. In the NZTA's global kind of plan for the south of the South Island, there is mention of heritage trails and trails going up towards Omarru and down to Waikoloa, have we considered putting into the plan around some of those priorities to connect up with cycle trails?
So it is referred to here and the completion obviously of the tunnels trail would enable a connection through Mozgill to the extension that they're looking at, the potential extension of the Cleuther Gold Trail and then obviously there is potential to extend through to Central Otago Rail Trail as well, which would require a significant amount of planning, but those options would be more achievable with the completion of the tunnels trail.
We could also connect to Ocean through Omarru as well, so yeah, I just, I was just putting it out there that there is, they are in the global plans and whether we're considering that, thank you.
Councillor Vandervass.
I'd like to shadow wanting to move option three.
Any further questions? Can I just clarify what it is that you're asking to move councillor Vandervass? Option?
Option three on the paper, page 28, which is the status quo.
Okay, you've moved that, is there a second to it? It fails from one of a second. Would someone like to move your...
I'll move option eight, which is the attachment F.
And note that option eight is included in here, it's not in the, in the print of the...
It's essentially option one in the papers, but...
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I take that point, second to councillor Hawkins. Councillor Wilson, do you wish to speak to this in the first instance?
Point of order, sorry, can we see what option eight is, I don't have it on my paper.
Option eight is...
Page 37.
Well, actually it's program eight.
Program eight.
Yeah, so I think that's the confusion, it's program eight on page 26 of 79. So can we have that, yeah, that's changed now. Councillor O'Malley.
How is that different from option one, except we're just taking everything else out again?
Sorry, so apologies, so option, option one in the recommended options is, is this, what we'd left out of the recommendation was reference to program option eight, so the advice is that the recommendation to stand alone referenced program option eight, so that, what, what we have put forward is option one, recommended option.
It's the same.
Yes.
So we've got A, B, C, D, E. What we've put up there needs to work on program... is only to work on program eight, what we have in option one is council approved, preferred option program eight for submission and preferred options include, and then we've got A, B, C, D, E.
They're all included in program eight, option eight, all of those bullet points.
Okay, so why aren't we just option one?
Because the advice was that, that loses its attachment to program eight as per the paper, so when we go back and look later, if it becomes separated from the attachments, you don't have the detail attached to the recommended action, to the recommendation.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, your worship, and sorry, it is meant to be, I think, program option eight, just for clarity, that is attachment F.
Option one, program eight.
Yeah.
Otherwise we use the word option for both, it's confusing.
I appreciate that, and attachment F is program option, that's fine. Thank you. I'm delighted to see this work progress, especially in, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Jared Highlandon here who has been waiting since 2005 for this project to get on our box and I'd like to say thank you to all the efforts he's made to get it to this point. And he's done it so politely and nicely. The, I have had many discussions and especially recently on cycleways and I think, and it's been really interesting referencing some of the editorial talk about us getting better. In 2007 I came onto a council which was going through pains of not growing and people wondering where we, where the future lay for the city. I'm really delighted that we're now suffering growing pains, but that means some things that we don't particularly like, it means congestion in cars, it means some lack of car parks. The only way to change that is to give other people options. If you want growth, which I think has been clearly measured by a number of, said frequently, you need to provide another option for people to get places, one of those is cycling, one of those is walking and public transport would be fantastic too. These projects connect, start connecting people to the places they want to go and, and it's only when you've got a connected network of cycleways will we get an active mode choice change. It sits really well with everything we did in the integrated transport strategy and it talks to the people who want to get out there and do it and so I'm delighted to support this and I think this will be the game changer that actually with the other projects happening on the harbour, both on, on both sides, will make the change that we need to see, that actually will free up car parks for people who can't do anything else other than drive. I'm delighted to see this happen, thank you.
Councillor O'Malley.
I'm going to support this, but I want to raise the caveat that 35,000 people are entering the city from the south every day now and we have an active rail system with existing old stations that could be reactivated, but we will not be able to reactivate a commuter rail system if we don't have double rail, because we won't be able to fit commuters in among freight. And my concern is that if this plan is not put in place in consideration for moving those thousands of people, we will end up limiting ourselves to only road transport for the majority of commuters entering the city. And so while I support this, I'm saying please, please go out and think about this plan in the context of making sure we'll also be able to do commuter rail in the future and I don't want this to be done as an us or them, I support this plan 100%, I want those... I want those to, this to be an open and clear discussion as to what we will and will not achieve as we go forward with this plan. Thank you.
councillor Gary.
Thank you, your worship. I would first of all want to congratulate, uh, my colleague councillor Wilson and, and those others in the community, uh, who have showed great tenacity with regards, uh, this program. And I want to just mention and remind ourselves that, uh, the livability of our city, this is an important element, are connected cycleway in terms of the livability of our city and the way people view it. Uh, and particularly so for the, for those people who are thinking of moving to Dunedin. And we are told that large employers such as the university, uh, when people are considering taking up a position, one of the things they ask is, uh, can they cycle? Can their children cycle to school? Can they cycle to work? Uh, and that is a key point for them and in terms of accepting job offers. So in terms of the livability of our city, this is great news and, uh, I fully support it.
councillor Elder.
Thank you, sir. Um, I congratulate, um, particularly on the tunnels. I visited the tunnels the other day and certainly they're going to be amazing tourism attraction. In fact, there's stalactites, or is it mites? I can't remember which, um, in that tunnel and it's amazing to actually go through. Um, I can see kids biking through there. Uh, I go up the big easy all the time and, and there's a lot of retired people now into biking. And I just see Dunedin having the Peninsula and Harbourside Cycle Trail and the trail going out to Outtrim and connecting with, um, the, the Central Otago Cycle Trails is actually bringing people to Dunedin for cycling. And I think that has to be a good thing. Um, I would like to see that carried on further as well with, um, connections to heritage trails and up to Omuru and out to Waikoloa. I, and I could see this just developing into, we, we could be a hub for cycling, excuse the pun.
councillor Vanivus.
I think it would be very nice to have, if there was a way of going through the tunnels on a bike, I would get on it, use it myself, think it'd be great fun. But I think the same is true of any number of projects that we might be considering. And at this stage, with the debt the way it is, with the fact that any money we spend is going to have direct interest cost because it'll all be borrowed, and the fact that we've spent so much money on cycleways already, most of it very poorly spent, I might add, because of questionable design, that I have no confidence that this proposal is going to be any better. Mr Saunders has said twice in the OTT recently that he believes that we have learned from early mistakes in cycleway design. I think that the evidence shows exactly the opposite. Take for example, the eight hundred metres of cycleway between the BP station in Andy Bay and the foreshore, which used to be a quite usable four-lane road with two large trucking companies using it. It has had three different design attempts, all of them flawed. The total cost has been one point two million that has been admitted to, and a year of disruption for all the businesses and users that were there. And if you look at the final Rolls Royce version of design of that cycleway, the most recent one, and look at all the mud tanks and drainage systems that have been expensively put on the eastern side, you will see that they are on the uphill side of the road and will never have any water flow down them. Again, incompetent. I don't believe that we have yet in this council got the level of expertise to either design or employ appropriate designers that are going to give us proper value for money cycleways. This plan that we are about to vote on is a plan that has been presented to us in this agenda paper with options, and none of those options mention the downside of cost. A plan without costs being known or even acknowledged in our agenda papers, to me, is not a plan, it's just a fond hope. It's also a plan that is, uh, going to be voted on without any estimates of probable cyclist uses. Again, we are talking about spending more millions on cycleways that may only get limited amounts of use. Not knowing, not even having an estimate of what use the cycleway might have is again, I believe, an irresponsible, uh, spending of ratepayers and taxpayers' money. We have, I believe, much higher priorities, or we should have much higher priorities in terms of what borrowed money we continue to spend, especially drainage and parking. But again, we find ourselves here with an agenda paper, and again, it's more of the cul council voting more millions for cycleways, most of which remain mostly unused and most of which have not been competently designed. Until I can be convinced that the design of cycleways is going to be vastly better than it has for a long time now, and until I can be convinced that there will be a significant number of users of those cycleways, I cannot bring myself to vote on behalf of the ratepayers to spend these unspecified millions.
councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Um, there are two broad categories of cycling infrastructure and cycling investment and cycling projects. One is around recreational use, um, and, and, and facilities for tourists and visitors to use, and, and one is for commuter use and for people to use to and from work and school every day and so on. Uh, the latter of these two often attracts fractious and heated debate because it requires people to compromise. Uh, the former, incidentally, uh, is almost universally supported by people in our communities. And if you talk to anybody along, uh, state highway eighty-eight or along the peninsula or indeed any of the small towns inside and outside our district, uh, along the Central Otago Rail Trail, uh, you will find very little resistance to the investment that has been put into those communities for those recreational assets. Um, what's exciting about this project, or at least, um, you know, the priority within program eight, program option eight, option one, uh, whatever we want to end up calling it, is that it is both of those things. Uh, it offers, um, you know, it, it's a, a commuter, a commuter route access for our population, our growing population, as we're often reminded on the tairi, and eventually will tie into the work that Mr Highland and his team have so successfully been lobbying for, for over a decade in terms of investment in that recreational asset, uh, through, uh, our abandoned railway tunnels. And I think, um, that is a phenomenal opportunity, uh, in this, um, in this program of work to be able to achieve both of those things, uh, at the same time. As to the St Clair-South Dunedin connection, I know that's raised some eyebrows, the indicative, uh, um, route that's been suggested, um, but I don't think people need to be concerned about that. I have full confidence in staff and I think the subsequent paper to this one, uh, is proof that our transport staff are open to evolving their thinking and taking on board the feedback and suggestions from our community as to coming up with, um, better solutions. Um, and that will evolve through feedback and through detailed design. Um, and just because the spectre of usage has been raised, um, this is a network we are building, uh, and numbers of users may be low, and that's always going to be the case before we have complete, finished a complete network. It's like suggesting that, um, you know, it's outrageous that nobody was using the stadium before they'd built the stands for people to sit in, because a network is only ever going to be as strong as its weakest link. Uh, and until we take this opportunity to start fixing, uh, some of those weak links in the network we have and extending it further, uh, I don't think we're ever going to see the uptake, uh, in, uh, in, in usage and the, the expression of the latent demand for this, um, for these assets and for this network, as councillor Gary and others have pointed out, that are increasingly demanded of us by residents in the twenty-first century. Um, so I applaud staff for the work that's gone on to date and I look forward to seeing this, um, through its detailed design phase. Thank you.
to the speakers.
Um, before I come back to councillor Wilson, I'm, I'm very supportive of this. This has been a very long time coming. Uh, we identified the potential, uh, that the disused tunnels provided to us years ago. Uh, and as councillor Hawkins has, um, said, uh, the, the list of advantages is considerable for all types of users. With regard to the use that our cycleways, uh, have, I would point out that if you get out, um, down Portsmouth Drive, for instance, uh, early in the morning, you are nearly knocked over in the rush of, of cyclists. There's been an enormous upsurge in use and that's without the system being connected. So I have absolutely no doubt that, uh, once this particular portion is completed, there will be considerable use from Mozgill. Councillor Wilson.
Um, I'd just like to, um, one point, which I didn't say myself in the earlier part, but has been echoed certainly by, um, other councillors, is a thanks to staff who have got us to this point. It has been a long, hard road, um, and those that have ensured some of the negativity that comes with people, um, not wanting to compromise and not wishing to, um, see change, which is regrettable when generally most people have wanted change of some sort, does not changes that don't suit them.
Okay, I'm going to put it. Um, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Oh, recorded, please.
Thank you, recorded. Councillor Vanivus against, that's carried. Okay, on to item twelve. You're sitting, staying put for this.
E.
Um, proposed parking changes. Um, do you want to introduce this or just?
Uh, yes, I will. I'll just, um, wait for, um, yeah, thank you. So just, um, uh, note on the, uh, recommendations. So with, uh, the New Zealand Transport Agency have, um, recently approved a new template for, um, delegating parking controls on the state highway network. Uh, and we have, uh, used that template and had that delegation provided to us from the New Zealand Transport Agency. They've also reviewed, um, the scope and set out of parking bylaws, um, and, and provided some feedback where, in the process of writing a new bylaw at the moment, and we will follow that, uh, template when we complete our new bylaw. Uh, what we are adding to the, um, recommendation today, which will become D, uh, is, uh, just acknowledging that the existing, uh, traffic and parking bylaw, um, is pursuant to the most recent instrument, um, of delegation. So that's, that was actually received yesterday, uh, and has been signed by the NZTA CEO and our CEO. So, uh, that is a administrative, um, exercise, but we will include it in today's recommendations.
Opened up questions now, councillors. Councillor Gary.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'm very supportive of, of the changes. Uh, I know that they won't suit everybody, but I do have a very specific question for you, Mr Saunders, and that's on page fifty-three. Uh, the new B-themed pocket park, which is, is a fabulous idea, but I do note that six paid parks and two motorcycle parks will be changed to no stopping lines. Now, the number of car parks in that area has decreased considerably. Um, it's the fourth box down on page fifty-three. Um, and, uh, it's right next to the Otago University School of Physiotherapy where they have specialist classes for people suffering from a variety of illnesses, often very disabled. And there is one disabled park there. Um, the number of parks has decreased with the roadworks, uh, the dental school, uh, construction, and now I see we've lost through the parks here as well. What provisions have you made there and also in the wider parking changes for, uh, mobility parking users, please?
Uh, I, I don't know the specifics, councillor. I, I do know that there's been significant discussion with the physiotherapy school, um, through the design of the pocket park and the reallocation of parking. Uh, there will be a review of that area when the traffic management plan for the new dental school, um, comes to a conclusion, uh, which may provide some more opportunities to, to modify some of the parking spaces. And there is always the opportunity through our relationship with the university and, and the physio school, um, to make more provision in that area. But my understanding is the discussions to date, they, they are comfortable with the design, but we will continue to get feedback from them.
councillor Vanivus.
How have you consulted with the commute, with the commuters that currently use those hundred and fifty-odd car parks?
The consultation ran, sorry councillor, I'm just trying to find it in the report. Uh, hm? So the, um, consultation, uh, was publicly advertised, um, between, on Wednesday the seventh and Saturday the seventeenth of November in the, um, Otago Daily Times, it was also on council's website. Uh, so that is, that gave anyone who, um, wished to take that opportunity the chance to provide feedback and subsequently to come and speak at the hearing if they chose to.
And how many commuters took that opportunity, to your understanding, roughly?
I, I don't know the breakdown of commuters, councillor.
Right. Um, the, um, commuters that can no longer use that area, your ride-sharing scheme notwithstanding, where do you think those commuters will likely try and find parks?
Uh, so there are still some all-day paid parks there, otherwise there will be further out from that zone, um, the balance of free all-day parking, which is in high demand. Um, but that, if, if there are commuters that still, uh, wish to drive and find a free all-day park, then they are now located further away, um, from that extended area.
If you looked at the effects on the suburbs, um, that will be quite strong if those commuters are now going to be parking in more distant suburbs. Have you looked at the effects that that will have on the utility and parking ability of residents in those near suburbs?
Uh, we, we are aware through, through feedback and not specific to this proposal, but other pressures on parking in, um, inner or residential areas close to the central city. So that, that's something that, that is considered. Uh, there, there is likely to be some more demand in some of those areas, um, due to the change. Uh, and this is part of a process that will involve, um, a number of changes and obviously also seeking, you've referred to ride-share, um, we'll be, we'll be looking at public transport, um, alternative modes as well, um, as it becomes more difficult to provide for, um, all of the different users looking for space close to the central city or some of our precincts such as Tersary.
Thank you for that. Is, is one of the options that you have been looking at an increase in the provision of residence-only parking areas, uh, as we currently have in streets like London Street and other inner suburbs?
We do have the ability where there are, um, the demand for a residence-only parking spaces, space fits with the policy to, to create more of those spaces, yes.
So is that something you anticipate doing as a result of this hundred and fifty car parks, um, now no longer being available to commuters?
Uh, we would expect that there, that we may receive more applications for residence-only parking, yes.
councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, your worship. Just a question about process, so it may be for our governance team, but, um, if this, uh, process was heard under the Local Government Act, which I'm assuming it was, is it a question of scope really as to whether, uh, either the committee or council has the ability to make decisions, um, that submitters didn't ask for as part of the process on the way through?
Uh, in this situation, councillor is the decision-maker.
councillor Elder.
Your worship. Um, just a, a question, um, related actually to potential unintended consequences. Um, I note that in Christchurch, there's a, a growing concern about the safety of hospital workers going home at, uh, anywhere from ten-thirty till twelve, depending on the ends of their shifts. And, um, my concern is the unintended consequence of having a hundred and fifty less parks and. And also the pressure on that area is that there are women having to park further and further out from the hospital, and it affects their safety. Is there any... Has there been any consultation with the nurses' union or the hospital workers around that?
So there have been discussions with the hospital around looking at opportunities such as opening parking buildings that currently aren't used after hours, opening them up and making provision for them. There's also more focus in the government policy statement on travel demand management. And we have resource within council now to assist large, or large and small employers to help develop travel plans which would deal with these sorts of issues. And that has been a discussion we've had with the health board as well. So there are certainly some other options there that we can explore and assist with.
Yes, because I mean, quite often also, these are families, you know, mums and dads, and often swaps shifts. So someone has to be home by 7:30 because dad's going to work.
Councillor, if you want to get involved in discussion, keep that to the...
So that was just wanting to address that because in fact, yeah, it is... To me, it is one of the, maybe one of the unintended consequences.
Councillor Newell?
Thank you, your worship. Just a question regarding the parking, the angled parking on Main South Road. It seems like a bit of a no-brainer to me after trying to pick up my kids from there. But just, there was a pretty high number of those opposed. I was wondering, was there a consistent thread in their opposition or... Yeah, what was their major opposition to the angled parking there?
The main opposition there was the current use of Main Road and the addition of angled parks potentially making the area less safe with cars reversing out onto Main South Road. And that came through consistently in the submissions. We, well, staff had a look at that. And we feel that that issue around safety and speed needs addressing, and we should address that as a package with the parking design. So hence removing it currently from the proposal. Still going ahead with some minor changes to improve safety directly around that school entrance. But having a look at Main South Road, I guess is a bigger project, not just for parking provision, but also for safety. So we would expect to see that coming through in a future piece of work.
So along those lines, sort of Jada Bars or something to slow the traffic down around that area?
Too early to say, but that type of engineering or changes to the road to encourage slower speeds and have a look at safe parking provision within that design.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, your worship. Just picking up on councillor Elder's question around the proximity to the hospital and night shift workers. Any, just confirming that any changes that are being proposed here around either the rate of charging or the duration of those parks won't have any impact overnight, given that charging ceases at 6 o'clock in the evening? Or is the intention that they'll be charged for 24 hours a day?
That's correct, no change.
Any further questions? Councillor O'Malley?
Well, just to follow that up as well, so there's no change in the time. And also, most of these changes aren't really that close to the hospital.
That's correct. Yeah, good, thanks.
Any further questions? Okay, would someone like to move the recommendations, including D? Oh, councillor Wiley, you did indicate, sorry. Second to councillor Gary. Councillor Wiley, would you wish to speak to it in the first instance?
Thank you, your worship. Firstly, I'd like to thank the... I'll move the options. But firstly, I'd like to thank the hearings panel. And also the staff. Again, we hear the staff and the engagement around this. But to pull this off in a pretty tight timeframe, but yet there was really good engagement from the community. And we had 76 people that took the time to look at this and engage with it. They also looked at a number of issues around where they lived or what they were involved with, and whether it was the school or whether it was around the state highway system. The key takeaways was that this dealt with, especially in the inner city, in the three spaces, we're looking at State Highway 1, Vogel Street and Moray Place, dealt with 9am to 6pm. It didn't deal with after-hours, it was very much about daytime hours. The point of note that I think needs to be highlighted is paragraph 11, where there were concerns about no time restrictions. So that a lot of those that originally opposed the State Highway 1 parking, it was because there was no time restrictions indicated in the original process. And people were concerned about the car parks being clogged up all day and not being able to be utilised by the public and for better services. So it's really, when you look at it, especially State Highway 1, Vogel Street and Moray Place, it is about better utilising the parking in the area. And that's for everyone. It's for our residents, it's for our visitors, it's for those who are coming into town and wanting to get out quickly. It's for everyone, it's not just about one group of people. It's not just about the students, it's not just about the lecturers, it's not just about the people who own their business in that area. And Vogel Street came through very clearly where there was a classic case of car rotation. They moved their cars from one spot to another on a two-hour, well, four-hour cycle. And this is about, and it's a stymied business, so it's about better utilisation. The resulting recommendations in paragraph 12, I think really summed it up quite nicely. And overall, the advantages are very well articulated in why we're moving forward in this process. Thank you.
Mr O'Malley?
I also want to comment on this statement around commuter travel and businesses and other such things. And the feedback that we got, especially on Vogel Street, was from the businesses there wanting to see turnover of vehicles. And originally, this bylaw amendment was to actually allow for unlimited parking time. And it was those businesses specifically that said to us, if you do that, you will effectively be giving very cheap commuter travel parking. And that commuter parking will eat up all of the parking and will have no turnover in front of our businesses. So it was in the response to business and the response to those submitters that those time changes were put in. It does raise this issue of commuters. And I think we are transitioning from a town, well, we've always been a city, but I think we're going to grow into a large city. And we now need to address, along beside this parking, how we're going to deal with the commute. And I guess that's why I brought up rail in the last one. And I'm just going to basically give a plug now, because I don't think I formally ever said it before. Only two cities, Wellington and Auckland, have been signified by the government to be given money for transitional rail. I believe Dunedin needs to be considered for that. And I believe now that we need to put our hand up and say, we want a commuter rail system to be trialled in this city. Because we have 35,000 people coming in through the bottom of the city every day. If only 5% of those people were to take rail, we'd have over 2,000 people coming through our railway station every morning and breathing life back into what is currently a museum piece. And bringing it back to a live living station, bringing all that activity to Lower Stewart Street and taking 2,000 cars off the road. If that's our ambition, we need to explore all modes of mobility. And once we do that, I think we're going to be a great city. We will not be able to grow beyond any means if we expect that every worker in every business is going to be able to bring a vehicle into town and park it on the street. There's simply not enough space. So we need to get them in and out on some other mechanism. And that will be, there'll be modes of walking and biking. But at certain distances, the probability of somebody walking drops to pretty close to zero. And biking will probably go to about 5 or maybe 10%. Most people will get in some vehicle of some sort. We have buses, but we don't control the buses. Although I'm happy to say that we're starting to communicate better with the ORC, and hopefully that will continue. And like I'm saying, I want rail now to be considered because we have a lot of the infrastructure already in place. But these parking changes, back to the actual item, are very, very, very important for us. Because if we don't get turnover of parking, we won't have life for those businesses. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Vandervis?
Councillor O'Malley has maintained that there simply isn't enough space to accommodate the parking needs that we currently have. I contend that we have had enough space in the past, that a lot of the space has, in recent years, given way to many kilometres of dotted yellow lines. I'm thinking of Frederick Street outside the old maternity ward and many other places around the town. That a lot of the space has more recently been given way to cycleways, that a lot of the space has been given way to bollards with chains to create wastelands underneath the railway overbridge, all of which used to be used by commuters. And this council has, I believe, in its lack of foresight, simply prevented them from having that. I accept that under option one, that this will improve the access for enabling visitors to Northern Eden, to the hospital, to the university, to the Otago Museum. But I point out that it is not visitors to these places that are paying. It's ratepayers that pay. And they will pay again when they have to get residence-only car parks to be able to park in front of their own houses. And they will pay again as commuters in particular, having to walk many, many more kilometres, often through inclement weather, to get to their place of work. Because we have prioritised visitors' car parks to this area over the ratepayers that actually pay for these car parks and pay all our wages as well. To force commuters to park even further out in the suburbs is not just to create an extremely unpleasant commuting environment for the commuters, but it also creates a kind of sclerosis, a clogging up of the inner-city suburbs and the quality of life that people pay quite dearly for in their rates, especially in the hill suburbs near the city. The more resident car parks that we see having to be produced because residents are so desperate to make sure that they have somewhere near their house to park, the more we will see poor utilisation of parking spaces. As these residents often have these residence car parks vacant during the day when they also have gone somewhere to work. And so we see a situation where you have, London Street's a perfect example, residence car parks that are vacant all day in desperately needed parking areas. And then they are available for just a few quite heavily paying residents who have already paid their rates for their buildings anyway. So what we have is we have, I believe, a policy here which I accept that the Vogel Street businesses wanted more turnover in their area and that this is not entirely a bad thing. But the biggest part of this is actually the exclusion of commuters. Commuters are the people that live here in Dunedin. Commuters are the people that we are supposed to represent. Commuters are the people that actually voted for us, not visitors from out of town. Why would we prioritise inner-city parking for visitors from out of town? Unless, of course, we felt completely guilty about having stuffed all the hospital parking and the university parking with needless changes in cycleways. I believe that this parking patch-up does nothing to address the fundamental issues. It will raise revenue because visitors will have paying parks and more residents will have to have residence-only parks they too will pay for. But the residence car parks will be expensive to set up, to maintain and to police, and they will waste parking spaces during the day that are desperately needed. To go forward and vote for this policy, which only enables visitors and disadvantages everybody else, I think is a major mistake and one of many parking mistakes that this council continues to make.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, your worship. Unless you're playing a game of Monopoly, there's no such thing as free parking. Everything costs, both in terms of the cost of maintaining that asset, but more importantly, in the opportunity cost that comes with assigning a public space to private storage. Now, we know we have competing demands here. We have the needs of shoppers and diners, and we've heard about that, and the needs of businesses, obviously, and the commuters that we've heard about often. But more importantly also, the desire within people within both of those groups to be able to do both of those things without having to drive somewhere and park a vehicle to be able to do so. None of these groups have a monopoly on a public space. And this is about balancing those competing demands and also providing for people who aspire to do things differently than they are currently unable to do so. We need to encourage and continue to encourage alternatives. And that is, you know, active transport and public transport have both been alluded to, not just because of the environmental imperative, although that is certainly paramount, but again, because that is increasingly what is demanded of us by residents who live in a 21st-century city and are growing a 21st-century city at that. I think it's sad that any parking discourse we seem to be able to have becomes so quickly, so reductive so quickly and so binary so quickly because these are complicated issues. And I'd like to thank the panel and the staff involved in this process for doing a very good job of taking the feedback from the public on board and making amended recommendations and coming to the conclusions that we have before us. It's certainly not going to solve all of the issues that we have, but it is certainly a part of the solution. As I said, this is about balancing our space for competing uses and trying to work towards finding the most efficient use of that space that enables people to go about their business and, you know, and their day-to-day life as efficiently and effectively as possible using public space to do so. Thanks.
Councillor Gary?
Thank you, your worship. And I think frankly, it's skearmongering to suggest that the commuters and the ratepayers worsen off through these parking changes. What we've been listening to, and it's been said very clearly, that this is part of a larger change. This is part of a larger plan, and this is a step towards that. It's going to cater for all parking users, that's been made very clear. And I just want to acknowledge that people find, people in the community, we all find change difficult. And there's something about parking that gets people really excited. And I'm one of those too. We all have our particular pressure points that trigger a response. But I'd like to add my thanks to the staff for listening carefully and the panel to listen carefully to the people who took the time to make submissions. The changes will not please everybody, but we need to remember they are part of a larger change. And I'd also like to acknowledge the lateral thinking that's going on because it is going to require that as we go into the future. And one of those that was mentioned was around the possible use of parking buildings overnight for our hospital workers. Those are the kinds of conversations going forward that will assist. So I support these changes and thank all of those that work towards them.
Thank you. Further speakers? Mr Elder?
I'm happy to support these changes because it does in fact address the needs of those areas for short-term parking, particularly for the museum, which my children attended every holidays, and the university. But I also want to say, I'm glad to hear of the ongoing conversation about the options and choices ahead of us for commuters regarding the hospital and the university. And really am interested in that larger conversation. And I agree with councillor Gary regarding the thoughts around the parking building near the hospital. We do need to think differently and we need to think laterally, and congratulations on that.
Look, I can support this. I think the hearings committee heard these and they heard what people had to say. I also think it's that councillor Vandervis did make a good point. I think when you do look around the city, there's a lot of places where you see additional yellow lines that perhaps don't need to be there. And I think around Corner Hope Street and Jedy Street. And I think maybe if some of those places could be looked on in the future, that would also be worth considering.
Any further speakers? Councillor Wiley, you'll write a reply.
Thank you, your worship. As we've all heard, parking is an issue for the city, and there are some options going forward, and some of them have been talked about today, whether it's rail, whether it's better public transport, walking, cycling, or parking your car. The scope of what we were given to look at and what this paper is about, I think covers it off very, very well in sense of what we were asked to deal with. We weren't dealt with the bigger issues and how to solve the parking issues of the city, thank goodness. We were dealt with the issues that are in front of us, and so that is what I'm happy to support.
Okay, I'm going to put it, and please bear in mind that there are four parts to this. There's the three on the order paper and the one on the screen. On put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, record it, please.
Record councillor Vandervis. No, that's carried. Thank you. Okay, on to item thirteen, the submission on the proposed regional pest management plan and biosecurity strategy. Councillors' questions. Councillor Wilson.
Apologies for not sending some of these questions through earlier, but I have literally just come from a Predator Free Dunedin meeting where much clever people than myself were discussing these issues. And I just want to understand for clarity how some of these things will operationally work. The first question I've got is about occupier. And I think page seventy-three of the proposed plan, there's a suggestion that the ORC do not see at the moment effectively requiring occupiers to do pest work, which undermines the work that a substantial number of volunteers are doing, especially in the Peninsula and the Landscape Connections Trust work. And I'm just wondering, while we talk about occupiers, whether we should be considering a requirement that occupiers do do that work or that the council, regional council can do that work for them? I think your occupier one is about the owner occupier and distinguishing rather than supporting the initiatives that are happening already by occupiers who aren't interested in doing pest control work.
It is, but it's the opposite of what... I think we're saying that it would be most effectively meant by occupiers rather than owners.
So, yeah, no, I appreciate that. That is a slightly different point. The point I'm trying to make is that we've got predator work happening, like on the Peninsula. My understanding is on page seventy-three of the report, about the second paragraph on the right-hand side, the council is saying that they won't go and require people to do that, it'll be something that they'll do later. They might need to manage, and I'm just wondering whether we should be encouraging the regional council to be looking at a requirement on owners.
I can only add that we looked at road reserves in this context, and with weeds on road reserves. Now, many of the road reserves are being occupied by the neighbouring landholder rather than us, so these people have the benefit of those areas, yet when there's balmaria growing on it, the regional council comes to us to control it. So we have suggested that in those situations, the regional council goes straight to the occupier.
Sorry, I think we're talking about different issues. I'll try and rephrase and come back to you.
Can I assist here? I think what councillor Wilson is saying is, should we not be encouraging the regional council to require occupiers or owners, whoever's on it, to deal with weeds on their land?
It's exactly their point. It's not about the land that we might own. I'm talking about in principle, where an owner may have pests or they may have opossums. At the moment, on page seventy-three of the plan, not about submission, and I'm sorry, they're about similar numbers, there is a statement in here saying, "It is not proposed to introduce occupier control responsibilities at this stage." Now, that is fundamentally going to undermine the work that we've got funded by Predator Free 2050, if the regional council were coming in with no sticks. And I'm just wondering whether we should be encouraging the regional council to have sticks at this stage as well as all of the encouragement.
I'm sorry, but my reading of the draft submissions is that it's exactly what we're saying, that the most effective way is that the responsibility sits with the occupier.
It's good, I mean, as long as, okay, so that is, that part as well.
But, that's my reading of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, at the top of page seventy-three of...
Yeah, that's the problem with the numbers here.
Of the submission.
And the only other question is, one of my favourites is feral cats, and taking the definition of feral cats, that they virtually look the same as any other cat, I'm just wondering whether we need to have a mechanism in here to identify feral cats, and the only way I can think of that is microchipping, which we can't do as a council, but I'm presuming under the management plan that they could require.
We've referenced that in paragraph thirteen of the draft submission, but...
I'm wondering whether we should be asking them to consider requiring microchipping of... It's fine to manage feral cats. What they're not saying is we're identifying the non-feral cats by requiring microchipping.
You reference cat management, which I take to mean both feral and domestic cats in the context of cat microchipping, but if you'd like some clarity, we could look to that, but it is challenging to modify on the fly.
I appreciate that.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you, your worship. Forgive me if I've overlooked this or missed it, and a follow-on from councillor Wilson. So can I give you a scenario and ask you if this is covered by the submission? So, for example, the biodiversity group in their work are trapping opossums. Currently, if a landowner says, "No, I don't want you on my property," and that has happened, then the group cannot go in and trap. And that has been a situation in some instances with some considerable landholdings, which does undermine the efforts, the considerable efforts and money spent on that particular programme. Will this, what we're proposing, what our submission and the proposals from ORC, will that change? Will that insist that the landowner has to allow a group onto their land to trap?
If you look at point twenty-four and twenty-five in the draft submission, that's exactly what we're pointing out. What the regional council has done, they have the two site-led projects, one is the West Harbour one and one is the Peninsula one, and they list a large number of species, both animal species, pests, and weeds. But everything that they have listed, the control of it is 100% voluntary, and that's where we object, particularly with regards to opossums, where we've had a project going on on the Peninsula for more than 10 years without killing 15,000, 20,000 opossums. If everybody was part of this operation, this project may have been completed by now. But because we have an X number of people who do not want to participate, we have asked that for the site-led project, the regional council can enforce landholders to participate. And if they don't want to participate, then the regional council should have the ability to access the properties to carry out control.
This is point thirty-five.
Thank you. Further to my point, do you think we have voiced that strongly and clearly enough?
We do, but again, if councillors have alternative wording, then we're happy to, you know, redraft aspects of that.
councillor Benson Pope.
Thank you, your worship. I'm wondering if, and it really follows from those two questions, if someone, Ms Graham perhaps, could enlighten us about the relationship between ourselves and Predator Free Dunedin in terms of funding and support and so on, and similarly between the regional council and Predator Free Dunedin. And, I mean, I guess it comes back to the point about who's doing the work and so on, but I think that's an important dimension of good outcomes around these projects.
I'm happy to do. So both the regional council and the Dunedin City Council provide funding to Predator Free Dunedin. My understanding is the regional council is £300,000 per annum for each of the next three years. Our funding is slightly less than that and decreases over the period of the first three years of their long-term plan. I think £250,000 for the first year, £250,000, and then, what is it for the second? I think it's £150,000 for each of the next two years. In conjunction with that, we operate in a partnership arrangement with Predator Free, and so try and work as collaboratively as we can with them. We've had discussions with them about what we were intending to submit and suggested that if they wanted to support our submission where they could, where they felt they could, that would be great, but that they should feel free to submit independently on issues where we weren't aligned to the ORC.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, your worship. It's a slightly different question around the distinction we're drawing between landowner and occupier, and I take it that it's working backwards essentially from a road reserve definition where we don't occupy that land, but I'm just wondering if it's the intention of staff for that to capture a situation where the property is tenanted, whether the tenant would be expected to be required to run that pest control management, because they would be, I suppose, the occupier. I mean, I defer to any more expert legal advice on that, but I would hate for that to end up being the case, so if we could get some clarity around that, that might be helpful.
In the current situation, and that's where this submission is based on, we're talking about, not about pest control in a strip that's about five metres wide, we're talking about specific weed control, especially species like balmaria and old man's beard, where we are being treated by the regional council just like any other landholder, and we're getting spreadsheets of hundreds of sites every year where we have to go in and control. And it's sometimes quite difficult, because some of these sites are in road reserves that have been completely occupied, it's part of somebody's garden. So that's what this is based on. It's not based on possum control or rat control or whatever, it's purely based on those specific weeds.
But I think it wasn't intended to capture tenants in the traditional sense of the word, but we can check that the wording is tight enough that it's not.
Councillor Hawke, you have a question.
I think this may have to go a bit further than just the ORC, because Osprey and TB Free can't charge or go onto any property under, I think it's five hectares, anywhere in the city or anywhere, because they don't pay a TB levy. Around my place, I've got a whole lot of small blocks, and when Osprey were doing all of their poisoning for opossums, they weren't allowed to go on any people's place without permission. So it needs to be addressed, I think, further up the chain than just the ORC to cover all those small blocks, because of government saying you don't have to. It's a bit hard for the ORC to have a different rule.
Are there any questions? Councillor Vandervis and now councillor Wilson.
On the general question of encouragement as opposed to legal enforcement, do you know if the ORC policy that they used to have several decades ago at least of providing free timms traps for opossum killing, if that is still in evidence? Because as someone that used them 20 years ago, I found that very effective. Do they still do that?
No, they don't, and we get requests from the public exactly about it, and I thought I referred them to the regional council because I knew that they were handing them out using a bond system, but I was told that they stopped doing that because somebody brought a timms trap, and then an administrator got almost caught, and then they stopped.
I can't ask what it was they stuck in the hole, but I do wonder. Yes, sorry, do you see any unintended consequences of legal enforcement, given that the nature of rural people tends to be a little more reactive than perhaps the more compliant urban types? Is this an awareness that you have in terms of the kind of personalities that you're going to end up dealing with?
We can't really answer that, councillor. What we could say is that if we wanted to frame up more around encouragement in the submission, councillors had words that, around that, then we would heavily consider those.
Okay, so basically I just wanted to know if you had acknowledged that encouragement was preferable, especially in rural areas, for the reason that I suggested.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, and I apologize, I had read the submission, I missed twenty-five when I went back and reread it, and I'm very glad to sit here, I was looking at the occupier in the other sense. The last question, the sustainably control, which I appreciate, for feral cats and musterlids and in the site-led projects, I'm just wondering whether we should be submitting on them being contained, because there are certain areas that I think the city is interested in us not having any of those pests, and at the moment, sustainably controlling them is at the lower end rather than containment, which may mean that you're getting rid of them from certain specific sites. I'm just wondering whether we should be more aspirational.
And so are you referencing paragraph twenty-five of the draft?
I'm referencing, this is the problem reading a draft and a plan on one iPad, seventy-three again of the actual plan where it says sustainably controlled feral rats, hedgehogs and musterlids, and doesn't talk about rats from, say, the Itagga Peninsula, when one would hope that they were slightly sustainably controlled while there isn't a huge reduction in numbers, and one would hope that we were aiming slightly more aspirationally to getting rid of them in certain areas, which is the containment. The containment is a level higher than sustainably control, and I think it just probably reflects the Predator Free aspirations better.
Can't really answer the question in a lot of detail, other than saying that the Itagga Peninsula biodiversity group's programme has only opossums as a target for the next five years. So, you know, looking at rodents, it's going to take much, much longer to even address that.
Sorry, are you talking about opossums for eradication or opossums is the only pest that they're dealing with?
councillor Lalfisa.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for the ongoing mahi. I'm looking at page seventy-two, the submission, under general comments, paragraph eight, and I suppose I'm following up on councillor Benson Pope's question in regards to the working relationship between the city council and the pest-free crew. And just, so you say to, in your submission, in our submission, that it's not likely to be known until early next year who's going to be the lead agency on the urban linkage thing, so it's a bit bandaided, but who is likely between DCC and Predator Free, Itagga, going to be, in your opinion?
The steering group met about that about 10 days ago, and I attended, and there was ongoing discussion between DOC, the DCC, and Predator Free about who will be best placed to deliver the urban linkage programme. Early in the new year, it was either, I think, the second week in February, the plans to come back and a decision will be made then about where it will be best delivered from. It'll be one of those three groups.
Any further questions? Right, would someone like to move the resolution? It's councillor Benson Pope, second to councillor Lord. Do you wish to speak to it, councillor Benson Pope?
Just briefly, Mr Chairman, I think there are some, obviously some issues around some of the finer detail of the submission, but I'd remind councillors that it was circulated for comment some considerable time ago, and inevitably, because of the size and the variety of groups involved, there will always be differences. I think some of the issues that we perhaps need to focus more on have been highlighted in the comments and questions that people have raised, but I don't think the capacity to respond around those issues is in any way restricted by our submission. is in any way restricted by our submission. I'd like to see a more comprehensive set of activities, not as part of the submission. I think the submission goes far enough in the interim. But clearly, other groups such as Predator Free will be submitting on their own. And we will hope that we continue to raise awareness in our communities, particularly those areas where we do have our equivalent of inland islands, to attack pests of all kinds in a coordinated sort of way. I think through Tauro, we've had some really positive discussions about the capacity with youth in particular and education around the level of involvement we need in communities to make sure the Peninsula, for example, and other similar communities where there are substantial activities happening can be well coordinated. And I think that's one of the many positive outcomes of this process.
Further speakers, councillor Wilson.
Thank you, your worship. I support the submission and I'm grateful for the work that's done. It is a rather complex document and brings into play a lot of thinking in a way that's quite different and operationally different from what we usually do. And I've still come into terms with some of the other views that have come from the meeting I've had this morning. I think while putting the submission in is great, and I support that, I am hoping that someone, whether it be yourself, since it's in your name, your worship, or the Chair of Planning and Environment attends the hearing. And I would be fully hoping that that happens so that any of those nuances can happen, whether it's a staff member or a councillor. I hope this isn't the end, that we just lodge this and leave it. I hope that we are having someone attend the hearings, which I understand will be happening next year, and will be commissioner to make some fairly significant changes to ensure that those, especially that occupier issue is dealt with and is well argued at the hearing.
Mr Garrett.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to thank the staff for the work done on the submission. During the time that I was on the Otago Peninsula Community Board over a period of nine years, the issue of pest control, both pests and plant pests, was a hot topic. And the considerable effort by community groups and the achievements by the biodiversity group out on the peninsula has been considerable. But it's not been without its challenges. And I do think that this addresses very well those concerns and those difficulties. It also raises an awareness and education amongst members of the community. And I have noticed over the last 11 years, a much better awareness amongst landowners who perhaps haven't lived rurally before and have bought a bit of land and have become aware of the responsibilities they might have and the plants that perhaps are pests that they didn't realise. All of those things happen. I noticed we had a number of people settle in our area from different countries. In the village that I live in, there are 14 different nationalities last time I counted. So people come from different backgrounds, they come from cities sometimes to rural areas, and it's a learning process. And I've seen a huge uptake in terms of community involvement and engagement, which has been led by and large by the voluntary groups. So I see this submission and what I hope the submission will achieve and the work by ORC and the giving of teeth really to the enforcement as being a really positive step as we shore up this part of our city. It's a very special part of our city, the protection of our environment and the special places within our city. So thank you to the staff for the work done, and I support the submission.
councillor Van de Wissens.
I'm not sure that giving legal enforcement, or teeth as it's been referred to, is not going to have unintended consequences in rural areas. Any statement that begins "if everybody" is obviously sure to fail because there's so much variety out there, you're never going to get everybody to agree to anything. My own experience, and it's been decades long now with a massive infestation of possums in my farming area, is that the occasional sweep through by the authorities and cleaning up the possum numbers was temporarily effective, but actually, over time, made no real difference because they weren't there regularly. What I did after I got tired of burying the possums myself, because the tins traps are very effective, but just having to clear them and bury them all the time just took too much time, I got a private person who's interested in getting a return from possum fur. And they have repeatedly come to my and adjoining farms and made a massive difference to the possum numbers. And it's the first thing that has made a difference in 30 years. So if you really want to do something about the possum issue in particular, my experience is do something to facilitate the value of possum fur and get private individuals to go in, and they seem to be just that much more thorough and regular.
Further speakers, councillor Wylie.
Your worship, I'll be supporting this. I think when I look at the groups on the Peninsula doing such great work, this will really give them some added teeth to be able to continue that work and actually really make a difference. So I think it's a great move.
Hawkins.
Just muted myself, there we go. Thank you, your worship. Just briefly to add a dimension that hasn't been canvassed up until this point, the Predator Free 2050 goal is a very, very ambitious one. And I don't think anybody can underestimate just how aspirational that target may end up being. But we must imagine Sisyphus happy. And I would like to add the thanks to the people who have gone on and led a lot of this work without the support of such a framework that has come up in the last few years on the Peninsula, as has been noted, but obviously on the other side of the pond as well, in and around Orakonui Eco Sanctuary and more latterly, the work through the Landscape Connections Trust. But I think we have an obligation to do this, not just because of the inherent value of conservation work, but under our obligations and our commitments under Tsiritie or Waitangi, because the impacts of colonization aren't just felt by people, although they most certainly are. We have a duty to do what we can to save what precious Taoka species we still have that are native to this land, that have largely been ravaged by the introduction of species by those who have gone before us. And there aren't a lot left in some cases. And so I think it's timely that we ramp up our efforts. And the resourcing that has come from this authority and the regional authority and from the Predator Free Quango will certainly help that. But a more supportive and ambitious strategic regulatory environment, the likes of which we are pushing the regional council in, in this instance, will certainly help those efforts as well. So I applaud that and concur with councillor Wilson's comments around being able to make our case more strongly in person should we get the opportunity to in the new year. Thank you.
speakers. Rannan, councillor Benson-Pope, do you wish to... Right, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Thank you, team. Right, now item 14, notice of motion on the rain radar. Councillor Benson-Pope and Hawkins, which of you wishes to speak to this?
I'm moving the notice of motion, your worship. As it stands on the order paper, it's a clear response to the unexpected bad news that the long-awaited installation of more technology in this area had been delayed because of a land sale. And I think we would all acknowledge, and staff have often commented on the fact, that we have only incomplete information during significant weather events about what levels of precipitation are expected and where. And the last heavy rainfall, we had made it quite clear that there was a significant gap around that information. So I thought it would be useful if we had the vehicle, by way of this decision of council, to advocate with whomever, not just the Met Service, might be appropriate, and our colleague regional council colleagues, to actually, and government, to get this installation in place somewhere appropriate and sooner rather than later.
I need to give some more information on this. I support this resolution, but not entirely for the reasons that it's been put forward. It's my understanding, I had a conversation this morning with the chief executive of the Met Service, and my understanding is that they came to Dunedin some time ago, a few months ago, and presented at a workshop and presented some of the reasoning around their delays, et cetera. And the long and short of it is that the Met Service is extremely keen to get this rain radar in place. They don't do it out of ordinary operational funding, so they have to go to Treasury for the money, and they are doing that. They have identified a site which is in a forestry block, so that the land is not owned by the people that own the forest. That's the first complication. But the site is on a scale of 1 to 100, it is between 90 and 100% suitable. It is as good as it gets. And it's, I'd have to say, apparently a difficult topography in this area to get a really good site. So they want to continue to pursue that site. Unfortunately, it has changed hands three times in the time that they have been endeavouring to get set up. So each time it changes hands, they have to go back to the start line and negotiate with the new owner what they should do. As I say, they are very keen to do it. However, they can't, it takes substantial foundations and concrete work, et cetera. It can't be done in winter. So there's a number of constraints here. The long and short of it is that they, A, would like to get it done as soon as possible, and B, would appreciate councils facilitating any consents, et cetera, that will be required. So the reason, going back to the start of what I said, that I support this resolution is, and I discussed this with the CE, it puts the request in the public arena and it allows their response to be in the public arena so that everybody understands what has so far held it up and why it has regrettably been two or three years later than they wanted it to be. So I invite other speakers, councillor Mallon.
I want to thank councillor Benson-Pope and Hawkins for putting this up. And I also want to acknowledge councillor Newell for the work that he's been doing in the background for this work as well. Because I think this is a real team effort getting this up, and it is good that it's out in the public environment. Just had a funny notice, I can't find standing order 3.9.1 in this book. And I'm wondering if it's 26.1 that this is now, have we changed the number? Anyway, that's a minor point, but anyway, thank you very much.
We'll hold that thought and we'll come back to that. Further speakers, councillor Wilson.
I'm thrilled to see this, although I think it's a weather radar. I'm not quite sure if it's a rain radar or a weather radar, and I'm only being pedantic. But the reason I raise that point, and it's not being facetious, it's because having a weather radar ticks absolutely, almost, I think, every strategy that we have. And this isn't just to know when we might be having a flood or when it might be a good night to have a barbecue. It's about the economic benefits that come from certainty of weather. And too often, weather radar have been about airports or very limited usage, whereas if we can get a site as good as you've just suggested, your worship, it will have ramifications through all industry and on top of that, social and cultural experiences. So I'm delighted to hear it. I'm sorry that there has been an inability to action this earlier. I'm wondering why it hasn't done under Public Works notice, if it's that hard.
I can tell you that the Met Service does not have the ability to use the Public Works Act.
In which case, I'm glad that this also refers to other agencies, because maybe it needs that other body to do that. But delighted to see it, I thought it was already on the books. But anything that might get some action is great.
Further speakers. Okay.
Thank you for the extra background, and that's most helpful. It may well be that this authority or others, other government agencies, might have the capacity around land acquisition, should that be necessary. I would only say that the Met Service site labels the maps rain radar, so I apologize if you prefer to call them weather radar, I don't care. I think the lack of this facility is unfortunate and needs to be progressed.
Okay, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Okay. I will move now that the meeting moves into non-public for the reasons outlined in the agenda, and that the general manager of DCHL GMA Adams be permitted to attend the meeting to speak to item C3 to provide any assistance in relation to the matters to be discussed. Secretary councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. We'll take a five-minute break while the guys pull down the cameras.